Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council Meeting. I draw it tonight is Monday, November 8th. Can you have the record show that all council members are present? Along with the city administrator, assistant city administrator, our attorney, our engineer, along with our planner. At this time, I'll ask you all to stand and join us in the Pudge of Legions.
Pudge of Legions to the fight of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item this evening is our open forum. But first, we have a special recognition tonight. This is, at our last council meeting, we had two people present for the photo contest winners. And tonight, I get to give a certificate of recognition to Michelle Stamman. Am I saying that correctly? So Michelle took a beautiful picture, which I'll show you guys all. And then I will go down and we will present her with a certificate, but it is called Riverwood Rust. Gorgeous. So at this time, I will ask Michelle to join me. I'll come up there. So again, this is a certificate from the city of Atsigo presented with appreciation to Michelle Stamman as the 2021 first place prize winner in our photography photo contest. And again, for everyone out in the audience. Gorgeous. Here is your certificate and a gift card.
What camera did you use?
Can I ask, was it taken last year?
Gorgeous. Well, thank you for submitting it. We had fun seeing all the options that were sent in and we had a lot of people vote. So we had a total of 582 people voted on our for the photo contest. So thank you again. All right. This is still the open forum portion of the meeting. This is where anyone can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak at this time? It looks like we have someone on Zoom raising their hand.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Hey, it's Corey Tanner, 7952 Palm Grin Avenue Northeast. I was gonna see if there's any consideration for pulling item 3.5, the water softener ordinance, to just learn a little bit more about it. And possibly have some questions.
If you'd like to ask your questions now, Corey, since it is open forum, you can are able to do that. And then we can, and I believe Jeff has some comments after that.
Sure. I guess my, my questions or concerns has to do with that not being with the building code. Do we anticipate any, any problems with that, with builders coming in?
Any other questions or comments? And we'll just take them all and then we can allow staff to respond.
Yeah, I think another question I had was, you know, what kind of a, as far as money is pricing, you know, this sort of system compared to other systems that aren't the high efficiency? Do we know a ballpark sort of range? And then I guess my third question was, do any of our neighboring cities enforce this sort of thing? So I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. Jeff, you had some comments and then I looked to staff if they could respond if they have any information. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Tanner, for your questions. One thing Kurt and I discussed in the subcommittee was the big concern with this was the sodium content in the both water treatment plants. And we discussed, and a good way to help bring those down would be to have new builds put in water softeners that could be, I believe it's, the numbers were 4,000 parts per million or 90% efficient. So there wasn't that much sodium content going into the sewage. So that's just for new builds only, or when you have to replace a water softener, the comments Dan, that's the, that's the reason, that was the reasoning behind it, to make sure also the both treatment plants are in, at least close to code, or help with variance with the MPCA to get that sodium content down.
Mayor, so this topic was discussed at staff level by the administrator, myself, the city attorney, and the building official with regards to how and the utility operations manager, as to how the city can implement a regulation like this. Because you have two competing sections of regulations. You have the MPCA rules governing the wastewater treatment facilities, and then the building code governing construction of homes. Under the MPCA requirements where the city is subject to limits on sodium within its discharges, we needed to implement means to address that concern. So thus, the ordinance comes forward. And discussing with the building official, the provisions in the building code where you can't require elements that are part of the construction not required by the building code. So the city cannot require someone to put a water softener into their house. However, if they're going to put a water softener in, because of the sewer licensing permits from MPCA, we can require them to meet certain standards. They are all subject to review by the building department. They do require a permit under the building code. So that's the opportunity then for the city to implement this ordinance.
There was other questions. He had, what kind of, or do any of our neighbors, neighboring communities have this in their code? Are we aware of anything? Adam?
Mayor, that wasn't the factor in staff's research. So
it was our own.
has been advised by MPCA that our chloride content in our wastewater discharges to a point where it is too high and will affect future permitting. And so the city had to take action in a way that Dan described in order to help limit that in the future.
And base it on what our needs are here in our community. Okay, thank you. All right, we are still under open forum. Does anyone have any other comments? All right, we will close open forum and move on to item two to consider agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'll move to proof the agenda has written.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Tom. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Next item is our consent agenda. Motion would be in order. That's Brittany.
My second.
Motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to our planning report, this is Harvest Run East, fourth addition. We'll turn this over to our city planner.
Thank you, Mayor. Capstone Homes is here this evening with the fourth addition to the Harvest Run East development, which is located east of Highway 101 and north of County Road 36. Capstone first platted the Harvest Run development. Then they moved to the adjacent 80 acres to the east and began work on Harvest Run East when it was approved as preliminary plat back in May of 2019. There was over 260 single-family lots divided between villa homes and traditional single-family lots. There's a range of lot sizes in the each class because of how the orientation of the project sat within the development and adjacent surrounding one-acre developments in Autumn Woods and walks and hills in the southern portion of the property. So those lots were required to be larger as a transition. But the zoning governing the property was R4 and R5 districts, consistent with the designation of low-density residential land uses by the comprehensive plan. This fourth addition consisting of 61 single-family lots in the northeast corner of the development is adjacent to future residential to the east and future industrial to the north. And that section is zoned R5 district. As I said, 61 lots within this final addition, 19 single-family dwellings, 42 single-family villa dwellings, mainly to the north of 61st Street. The city engineers review is included in your packet addressing the construction of streets and the other public improvements, including sewer water and stormwater facilities. With the streets, there'll be sidewalks on one side of each street within the neighborhood, not including the cul-de-sac street. And then also in the southeast corner of the development, the preliminary plat had provided for a trail connection between 61st Street and that cul-de-sac at 59th Street because it wasn't possible to connect an actual through street because of topography. But this will provide access for the River Point River Place neighborhoods to connect back to the trails out on Queens Avenue. So this little trail segment bridges a large gap in the, in the overall park system, being able to connect those neighborhoods as part of the overall system. With the final plat application, there had been a drainage and utilities establishment established across the property that overlaid the trunk sewer and water lines that were in place to provide connection between Queens Avenue and River Place neighborhood. That'll be vacated and then replaced either with right-of-way or drainage and utility easements. Park dedication is met as a cash fee in lieu of land for the number of lots in accordance with the fee schedule. There are the two outlots, the one in the southeast corner that encompasses the trail, and then the wetland in the northeast corner, as well as stormwater basins in that area that would be deeded to the city. And then finally, the city attorney has drafted the development contract, which outlines the instruction to the public improvements and securities and city staff's recommending approval based on consistency with the comprehensive plan, as well as the approved preliminary plat and conditions of approval thereof. So you have resolution 2021-87 vacating the existing drainage and utilities, but included as your packet findings of fact and decision approving the final plat, which include 11 conditions. And then finally, resolution 2021-88 approving the development contract.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to comment? Okay. All right. Council questions for staff or the applicant this evening. Tom?
Madam Mayor, Dan, you show kind of a bird's eye view of this and how people in this development are getting to the park.
So there's a trail at this location from the 61st Street. So it'll connect down to this cul-de-sac, which is in the northwest corner of River Point. So they basically have to then go through River Point down towards the intersection at Randolph and County Road 36 to where Frankfurt Park is.
Can you pull a?
Yeah.
Other map, please.
So there's the part there. Final plat is here and the trail connects at this location.
What is the distance? Do you have that?
About half a mile. So in the future, switch back here. Eventually, 61st Street, there will be development to the east of where Harvest Run East is. So this parcel highlighted in blue as a torrent property. This will develop straight across to Randolph. So there would also be street connections and sidewalks to lead out this way and then trail on Randolph down to the park.
Right. Yeah, that was gonna be my next question in the future. What's gonna be the shortest distance for people to get to the park?
This has been, as Dan said, a huge void for people that have lived down in this section of the city for years, that they've not been able to safely internally get out to our, our vast trail system that we have without walking on County Road 36. Dan and River Point and River Place, do they, do they all have sidewalks? Or is there some sections on here that they would be walking in the road?
River Point does not have sidewalks. It was developed prior to sidewalks being implemented in 2004. So those streets are 32 feet wide. Whereas the ones with sidewalks are only 28 feet wide plus the five-foot sidewalk. So.
Any other questions? Tom?
Madam Mayor, Ron, where's, I forget what type of soils are in this area, but where is the water gonna be drained to once it's developed?
The water for, oh, water grading?
Yeah.
In that area, it all heads towards the south to the Crow River. There's some large storm ponds that are adjacent to a ravine right in that area. And then that goes through the wetlands in the backyards of residents of River Point within those easements. And then that connects to the, to the Crow, as Dan shows underneath the Casaw 36 at that location at the Mole Point.
And just over the years, as it's developed, have we had any, any more issues other than the Crow River actually flooding over 36?
No, our storm ponds handled all the events of Kurt.
I just have one question. You know, I have been contacted from numerous residents that lived in the older neighborhood that was adjacent to this area that we're talking about. And, and I, you know, staff has been very receptive to be passing that on to the builder. Do we anticipate with this addition that we are going to have similar issues again? Or are they, are we redirecting them again on how they're coming in and out of this, the project?
Mayor, there is no physical connection between this addition and the other existing neighborhoods surrounding it.
Sure.
So there would be a street connection here back into Capstone's own neighborhood. There is construction going on in that neighborhood itself. So all of the construction complaints that the city received were along the southern line.
Yeah.
For the most part. And so those homes are under construction and should be completed soon.
Okay. I just wanted that on the record since I get calls pretty frequently on that area.
Yeah, Mayor, and we should also note that Capstone's been very proactive in dealing with their contractors and their supervisors. When we do receive complaints, Mr. Backertis will often reply on weekends to our messages. So we appreciate their attentiveness to the issue.
Absolutely. And I was going to say that. And that's why I made the comment is that their staff has been really good to work with also. So thank you for that.
Mayor?
Yes.
The city in developing it also allowed space between the lots that were the furthest out in that location by working with the developer to place storm ponds in that area to, to create some buffer. I guess to no avail, but it, you know, we did what, as much as was possible.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Do we know when we would, you would start and when the project would be completed?
If you could state your name and address, we have it for the official record.
Good evening. My name is Tom Pockridge with Capstone Homes, address 14015 Some Fish Lake Boulevard, Ramsey, Minnesota 55303. We began this neighborhood about three and a half, four years ago. And Dan is right. It came from Harvest Run now to Harvest Run East. This is our fourth addition. Actually, we're grading right now because the weather's been so good this year. We've been blessed. And so the soils, as everybody knows, it's clay soils out here, but it's perfect. So we're grading and we anticipate we'll be done by December 10th. As long as the weather holds out. But we won't start utilities or streets until spring, probably around May 1. So, but this gives us a head, head start for next year. So if you, you haven't gone through the neighborhood, please go through the neighborhood. It's, we like it. And so do the consumers. So.
Is it, is it sandy or clay at Shell?
No, this is all clay out here.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all clay. So, but this year, because it's been so dry, it's been perfect.
Everybody has nice grass up there.
Yeah.
So I gotta ask you the question that I usually ask. How was it working with staff?
Working with staff?
Yeah.
Excellent. No, that's true. I've known Dan and Ron since 2001. So I don't know if you remember, but I used to belong, I used to work for D.R. Horton back in 2001. So everything on MacGyver, I did that on MacGyver. I was one of the, it was us and another developer that actually built MacGyver and did all, all that neighborhood there. So it was fun. It's been fun working with them. Plus, I've worked with Dan in Lakeville, too. So.
You can, you can hold, you can hold your comments on that.
That's okay. You're catching up. You'll be number two this year. So in permanence. So you got any other questions otherwise? So thank you again. It's been great working with the city and with you people.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions or comments? Tom?
And a mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2021-87 vacating testing drainage and utility easements through the final plat Harvest Run East Fourth Edition, subject to the conditions stated on the findings of fact and decision as presented in the adopt resolution 2021-88 approving a development contract.
My second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to item five, which is city council reports and updates. Does anyone have anything? I was on Friday, I did attend the Dayton Parkway ribbon cutting. It was well attended. Obviously by the city of Dayton. There was people from Corcoran, Maple Grove. A great turnout. It's gonna be a great project that actually kind of overflows. It will help get our residents back home, too, a little bit roundabout way. But you know, kind of that whole freight corridor opening up for the city of Dayton, which then obviously commerce size affects all, all of us. So.
Gives them another way.
Yeah, it gives them another way in. So it, it's, there were some really great speakers I shared with Adam this morning, too. I think the best one was somebody from the State Patrol was talking about, you know, people need to slow down. We've had, we're on track to have the most deaths that we've had since 2003. Speeds are extremely high. We've had the most construction work deaths this year. So these are all of our neighbors. So we, you know, pay attention, get off your phone, follow speed limit and plan accordingly. So hopefully, you know, I mean, obviously for people that drive it every day, it's been a nightmare for years. So we got a few more left behind us. But it, it's a really nice project. And of course, I right away found my MIND dot person and said, how do we get our city logo on our bridges? So because I saw that real fancy one on 94. So he said, you're not the first person to ask. I said, oh, staff will be in contact with you. So it was, it was a great time. So they, they actually, also Tim McNeil was a previous mayor at Dayton. And, you know, they acknowledged him too, which he had a lot of work to do with that. So it was nice that he was acknowledged that way, too. But great project. It was really windy, really cold. So.
Well, shout out to the I-94 coalition.
Yeah, Steve, Steve Bot was there. And this went from not even being on the radar eight years ago to being done. And so now obviously trying to get the rest of the project up, up 94 done. So it's great when we all can get together and you know, cross lots of barriers with cities and counties and that all for the common good. So.
And in just a little history, as far as the I-94 coalition, what the, the big thing that they did was get a lot of communities together to join in on projects, especially the 94 project. Because when they go to DC to try to get federal funding, state funding, grants, that sort of thing, when they have a lot of municipalities onboard, counties and cities, they get higher scores in order to get those grants and stuff versus going in alone.
And, and one of, you know, to Tom's point, one of the little jokes that day was that Dayton had not wanted to participate in the coalition because they thought it was expensive. So.
I remember sitting here.
Kind of a little ironic, right? So.
Eight years ago, when they were asking us the.
Yeah, yeah.
I was trying to twist everyone's arm. I didn't have to twist yours, but.
No, makes sense. I mean, we're, we're all in the same region, you know, right? Are you, move product, you gotta get it there. And that's how your commerce comes to town, too. So, so that was good. So. Any other council reports and updates? We'll move on to staff reports and updates. I draw.
Here, I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder to the council, the city offices are closed this Thursday for Veterans Day. And next week on Wednesday, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m., North Star Regional out on the intersection of 39 and 19 is hosting an open house. So if you are interested in attending that, let me know. And I can get you more details on that. That's all I have.
Sabrina?
Thank you, Mayor. We should be finishing up the winter view and that should be getting mailed out hopefully by the end of this month. So residents can look forward to seeing that.
Thank you. Keep sending Sabrina emails. Did we include this? And I think this thing's gonna be like 75 pages at this point, but thank you for making everything fit or directing them. So in keeping us on task. Dave?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Ron?
Just that we're finishing up Wallace Estates survey. And we've gotten a few phone calls, but not a lot, and explain potential project to them, along with the council's new policy on assessments and seems to, there hasn't been any issues.
Are they concerned about, were they, is, is the initial call about the cost or?
I think they are concerned about what, what the project entails and what the cost for them may be. New policy seems to calm their fears.
Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. The next planning commission meeting is next Monday. There's a public hearing on the agenda for RL Carriers, a distribution facility at the southeast corner of County Road 38 and Queens Avenue. City staff did get a number of inquiries last week regarding the public hearing notice. But just a reminder for the council, if any of you are contacted directly, I recommend that you direct those inquiries to staff to respond to rather than make a comment on something that's gonna come before you for a decision.
Thank you for the reminder.
Good, Mayor.
Yes.
To that, Dave, what's the legal implication? Say, if we comment on an application that's before the city?
Well, you shouldn't comment outside of city council meeting setting. You're not allowed to prejudge or make any comments outside of the evidence that you hear in these meetings.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Next, Jason Altman's in the back.
Lot of stuff going on, I guess, as far as what I have on kind of my docket. So I'll try to just keep it short, I guess, the stuff that as it pertains here. This time of year is kind of an overlooked time for busyness, deer hunting, and everything going on with oddly enough in Wright County, enough with harvest time always kind of creates a whole bunch of different variables. Certainly, all of a sudden taking all the corn out of the field. The deer don't have anywhere to go. And so the car deer accidents absolutely skyrocket for this, but this kind of a two-week window where it's almost like we have more car deers during this two-week window that we do the entire rest of the year. One of the law of unintended consequences, of course, is all the vehicles and their safety features. One of the issues we're running into is somebody smacking a deer out in the middle of the night, and every single airbag goes off. and every single airbag goes off on the car, side curtains, in front of them, off to the sides of them. And all of a sudden, they're completely blinded by the dust, the explosive that goes off or the airbags deploy. And they're surrounded by a whole bunch of the white pillows, and they're all of a sudden, they're sitting in the middle of the road. And so we've been running into that a couple of times where somebody's calling up and going, I have no way to happen. But all of a sudden, my airbags are all going off, and I'm sitting in the middle of the road. And so it's kind of a panic moment, knowing that they can't even tell if their lights are on, so now they're a dark car sitting in the middle of the road. So we kind of have to really take those, you know, what is generally looked at as a minor crash or car deer accidents. And all of a sudden, we're hitting the panic button, having to respond, license sirens to a lot of them. We're really concerned about that secondary, if somebody's not paying attention, obviously there's a car. So certainly that, and obviously, you know, a lot of the farmers tend to race against the clock. And so we'll see combines and rain carts and things like that out in the middle of the night, too. So haven't had any issues with that. They usually do a really good job. Some of the farmers in town, actually, I've talked to, they say they go, they kind of go scout the route before they have to go to the field or go see how much traffic or if there's any issues with the construction. And they'll go check it out real quick and go, okay, run back, run back to the farm and grab all the equipment and go up there. So that works out really well. So like I said, I haven't had any issues with that. Some of the in-house stuff, we received some more, some of the issues that we faced in some of the callouts that we had for our SWAT team. One of the things that we were really missing out on is, it's called a throw phone for our SWAT team. So we were able to get one of those purchased. It takes about a year to get that. It's a huge officer safety deal and being able to get crisis negotiators in a safe location so we can have an open line of communication. That's, you know, some of those things that you kind of see in the movies more than anything else. And so we're able to have that type of equipment now. But we also got a, lack of better terms, it's a robot. So we're able to use that again for more of the officer safety rounds where traditionally, again, you look at the movies and kind of how things had to go. It's the SWAT team rushing into the house with all the gear on and everything like that. Now we have the type of equipment where we can actually stay back and we can have other equipment go in. And we have drones and robots and these throw phones and everything like that where we can really take our time. One, it's a huge officer safety improvement for us. But at the same time, it really, really opens up the variables and really opens up the, the options as far as handling some of these, some of these really critical scenes more safely. So this is my list of stuff I gotta do tonight. I got a few things. I'm gonna try to get this hammered up, so.
Questions for me? Robot go up steps or is it?
Okay, and it can do some pretty amazing things. Technically, the, the big advertisement on it is it has more torque than an F one fifty.
And more importantly, I thought the beard would be a lot longer if I don't.
I'm appreciating the extra seven minutes every night of not having to shave, so I can get my rest.
Jason, are you, oh, sorry. You know, you talked about harvest time, but are you seeing any, I guess, since, you know, kids have been now back in school a little bit, like any kind of car break-ins and stuff like that? It seems like you sometimes see that around this fall time.
We're still doing with it. I know Rogers got hit last night. So it's, it's still happening. It's, you're gonna have different groups. You're gonna have, whether it's locals that are just, you know, your teenagers going and looking for cigarettes and car charges and loose change, or you're dealing with organized groups that are coming up because they're, again, taking advantage of us. We're still, we're still randomly dealing with those. We're still randomly dealing with, just periodically, all of a sudden, one night, somebody is calling in and they're going, hey, there's people going into this, my neighbor's house. Unfortunately, we have vigilante, I guess, neighbors that are good about calling nine oh one at four in the morning. Glad that they're up, you know, some people are up that they see these sort of things. We had, we had, I think before they had an opportunity to steal anything at St. Michael about a week ago, where that was exactly what was happening, stolen car in a neighborhood, and somebody calls in that there's a car sitting in a weird spot with its lights on. And they call it up, and all of a sudden, my first car shows up, and suddenly you get people running all over the different places. So, like I said, I know Rogers had some car parlors just last night. I know we had some issues on Kitchridge, I think was the last place in town that we did, and that was about two weeks ago, so. We're dealing with it.
And again, are these cars that are unlocked or they're actually breaking windows?
Almost every single time it's something that's unlocked.
Okay. It's all preventable.
Yeah, it's, you know, the cliche, you know, lock cars, and if there's anything valuable, one, don't let it sit there. And naturally, if you're gonna have your MacBook Air sitting there, window's gonna get smashed out because that's really easy. For the most part, people don't wanna like, don't wanna make the noise at three thirty in the morning because that's a good way to get the cops called. But if there's something valuable, gone.
Also, November first is no parking on the streets. So are you guys gonna be, I know in years past, you've sometimes put the little reminder thing before they would actually get a ticket. Are you guys starting that?
So right on November first, we began handing out little warning notice cards and say, hey, just FYI, this is when it starts. Technically, you're eligible for a citation. Now naturally, if some people look outside and it's seventy degrees and it's really nice out, they're gonna go, I'm getting a snowbird ticket. Certainly, that doesn't seem necessarily fair. So we get out there and we try to make it known as possible by handing out as many warning tickets in the middle of the night as we possibly can, say, hey, it's coming, and then we'll, we'll keep doing it. Usually around when we go, okay, the first snow is about to fly. That's when we're actually worrying about actual citations.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for all you do.
Sure.
All right, then, if no one has anything else, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you for joining us. For council, we will meet again upfront.
Always have to be first on the top, always.
That's his thing. That's her thing.
I know.
He's first. Yeah.
As soon as you say it, someone like. That'll be our thing.